Good evening and welcome to the Sleda Independent School District's meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the Board that the public is allowed to attend. As provided, Sleda ISD Policy BED, we invite members of the public to make comments during citizens' input portion at the start of the meeting and according to the instructions provided with the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the Board may listen but may not enter into discussion on matters in citizens' input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students and ask that we all conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Sleda Independent School District. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:02 PM. We have a quorum with Chris Hernand, Connie Woodruff, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Trustee Hagerty and Lucero are unable to attend and join us this evening. They are considered excused. At this time, trustee Dwyer, please introduce our junior ROTC.
It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the pledges of allegiance, and then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC color guard from Eastwood High School. The color guard commander is Cadet Major Alex Yun. The other color guard members are Cadet First Sergeant Mary Jane Martinez, Cadet Private Andrew Aguirre, Cadet Private Peyton Zavasquez. The pledge leader is Cadet First Sergeant Sidney Rhinepold. Will you please stand for the presentations of the colors, the reciting of the pledge of allegiance, the Texas pledge of allegiance, and a moment of silence? Please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Forward, march, left, 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 right, 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 left, 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 right, march side, march. Color guard, halt, left face, three, set, march.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, please join me in the pledge of the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Order, march. Color guard, three, four. Color guard, halt, center, face, right, face, forward, march, left, 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 right, 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 left, left.
We have two recognitions for you this evening. At this time, we ask all trustees to please come to the front of the dais for the presentation. Audience members, please remain seated until the recognitions are complete. Thank you. Our first recognition honors Parkland Learning Community Schools, which were among 150 in the state to be designated Purple Star campuses by the Texas Education Agency. The designation is given to schools that show exceptional commitment to supporting the unique needs of military-connected students and their families. To become a Purple Star campus, schools must create and maintain an easy-to-access webpage, a campus transition program for military-connected students, and a military-family assistance initiative. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome and congratulate the principals of our new Purple Star campuses. From Desert Air Elementary School, please welcome Roxanne Murfa. From Dolphin Terrace Elementary School, Lorraine Martinez. From North Star Elementary School, Stephanie Larman. From Parkland Pre-K Center, Sandra Perez. From Parkland Elementary School, Maribel Givara. From Parkland Pre-Engineering Middle School, Jesús Ortiz. And from Parkland High School, Javier Salgado. Our final recognition honors the J.M. Hanks High School Marching Band. After a superb performance at the area contest in October, the Knights were the only El Paso campus to qualify for the UIL 5A State Marching Band Championships earlier this month in San Antonio. This marked the seventh year that the Knights have advanced to state, where they placed 28th with their racing-themed show, Start Your Engines. The Knights' marching band also won sweepstakes at the NMSU Tournament of Bands competition and first place at the Coronado High School T-Bird Invitational and the SISD March Fest. Congratulations to these talented student musicians. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome the leaders of the J.M. Hanks High School Marching Band, beginning with drum majors Lea Dressen, Also, please welcome the Silhouettes Dance Team captains, Danica Murphy, Yasmin Alba, Julie Flores, and Bella Licone. They are accompanied by band directors Horacio Gomez, James Cordova, Luis Civara, and Calvin Edwards, Silhouettes Director Crystal Nance, and Principal Ruben Cadena. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
input this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, we do. We have Lucia Esparza, and her topic is Book of the Month.
Good evening, members of the Board, President Ochoa, and Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. I would like for my speech to be on record. I am a parent in this district, and I am here today to express my concerns regarding the recent Book of the Month that was shared across elementary schools with this district. The book in question is called Leila, the Perfect Witch. It is very concerning this book was shared due to the obvious satanic imagery and wording found throughout the illustrated story. The question I pose today is, who selected this book and thought it would be a good idea to push a book on Satanism? Satanism is a religion, and since my kids have been in this district, there has never been a Book of the Month that promotes Christianity, Judaism, or any other religion. So why Satanism? There are several elements throughout the story that took the witchcraft concept too far and inappropriately provided exposure to young children. Some examples of the language of witchcraft in Satanism include Devil's Cherries, The Most Cunning Conjurer, A Coven, The Long Line of Powerful Women Who Are Experts in the Dark Arts. Some examples of inappropriate illustrations included the main character standing in a circle with the demonic spirit rising from within. There were also many pentagrams throughout the pages of the book. And lastly, the animation of Baphomet, which is the devil. The core story relationship skills were surpassed by the blatantly creepy and evil illustrations. Imagery included satanic symbols, spirit creatures, and even a naked woman with the snake wrapped around her private parts. YSD, this is not appropriate material for our children. This is disgusting. On your website, I saw you do have the books selected for the year. I now feel the need to read all the books prior to having my children exposed to them, and I encourage all parents do the same. The SEL Connection states that this book promotes self-management, relationship skills, responsibility, and decision-making. I can guarantee there was a plethora of other fall-themed books that could have been selected that would have covered those concepts and would not have exposed our children to witchcraft vocabulary and satanic imagery. Unfortunately, I am here too late. The damage has been done, and our children across the district were exposed to this book. I am asking YSD to know better and do better with the selection of our books. This book was too dark and exposed the religion of Satanism. Books with this particular content have no purpose in our school system. If for whatever reason you find the need to promote Satanism, why also not Christianity or Judaism or any other religion? I am kindly requesting that the Board reconsider the inclusion of books that have satanic vocabulary. Let's work together to find a balanced approach that respects both academic learning and the sensitivity of our students and their families. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Our next speaker is our Linda Valencia on ESP Day.
Good evening, President Ochoa, Dr. De La Torre, and Board of Trustees. Every year, American Education Week is a week-long celebration of public education in the United States. It is an opportunity to express our gratitude towards those who have worked hard to support and promote public education. The origins of American Education Week dates back to World War I, when many of the draftees were found to be illiterate. In response, the National Education Association and the American Legion joined forces in 1919 to generate support for public education. They developed a plan to raise public awareness about the importance of public education. The first observance of American Education Week was 1921. Today, American Education Week remains an important event that highlights a vital role of public education in our society. However, even in 2023, we are still having to fight to generate support for public education in the faces of challenges from charter and private schools, not to mention our very own Governor Abbott, who would rather cut funding from public schools and special education programs than to find ways to fund our educational system equitably. Despite our challenges, the Sleda Teachers Association is proud to have dedicated educators, support professionals, who work tirelessly to ensure every student has the resources and the opportunities they need to succeed. A Sleda ISD is committed to providing quality instruction, support services, and extracurricular activities that meet the needs of every child. They believe every student deserves the opportunity to fulfill their dreams for the future. And YTA is proud to be part of the Sleda community that shares this vision. To all those who have devoted themselves to public education, we say thank you. Your hard work and dedication inspires us all, and we are grateful for all you do to make a Sleda ISD one of the best public school districts in the state. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to both speakers tonight. Dr. De La Torre, do we have any presentations this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the Board, our first presentation comes to us from Whitley Penn. It is our 2023 Annual Financial and Compliance Report presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. De La Torre, President Ochoa, and members of the Board. Thank you for having me here tonight. We'll go through the results of the fiscal year 2023 audit, but first, let me start by, you know, letting you know who was on site working with your management team. We had Bea Hernandez, Kiefer Lagnada, both associates. Your senior associate was Jolie Killian. Leanne Karen Deng was the manager. I was the engagement partner. Then we have our engagement quality control partner that is an unbiased third party that reviews my work to make sure that my determinations and my final conclusions are appropriate. The audit process started in March, April, working with your management team to see what had changed at the district, whether any federal program directors had changed, and if there was any risky areas of concern. We performed our internal control walkthroughs. We identified the key controls, tested those controls all through May and a little bit into June. After the district closed its books as of June 30th, 2023, we came back in September to begin our substantive procedures, and I'll go through those here in a bit. All of this is in an effort to be here tonight to issue our opinion and the financial statements that will go to the Texas Education Agency and to meet that filing deadline. The internal controls that we focus on, of course, payroll is a very large item because 83% of your expenditures do go to payroll. Non-payroll, of course, is also evaluated along with procurement, both for the federal and state procurement rules. We evaluate your expenditures based on those two rules. Information technology feeds all of these areas, so we spend time there. PEMS and ADA is important to us because, as you know, average daily attendance affects your state aid, so we need to make sure that there are controls over those procedures. We also look at other revenues, such as your child nutrition, funds that are received at the various campuses, and we test controls as well. The substantive procedures, we start with basic flux analysis and ratio analysis. We move into predictive tests, and then we'll select samples and begin vouching and tracing the transactions to specific documentation. We'll also confirm with third parties, such as your banking institutions, as well as your bond third parties as well. We also use reports from the Texas Education Agency, the Comptroller's Payment Report, as well as the Summary of Finances that comes from TEA, to confirm and evaluate and analyze your state aid payments. The TEA payment report is very useful because the majority of your federal grants comes from TEA, and we're able to substantiate and gain comfort with those numbers that are presented in your revenues. With that, I'm pleased to report that you have earned an unmodified or clean opinion. We had to perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and also generally accepted governmental auditing standards, or the Yellow Book, and that is because you spend more than $750,000 in federal funds. This year, you spent $156 million, and we'll see the programs that we tested this year. We didn't have any internal control findings related to financial reporting, nor any findings related to compliance, and this has to do with state compliance. On the next slide, here are your federal programs, and as I mentioned earlier, you spent $156 million, and we have to audit those major programs in accordance with the regulations given to us by the Office of Management and Budget, compliance supplement. The major federal programs were ESER 1, 2, 3, T-Class, and Homeless. All of those have the same unique identification number that's given to All of those have the same unique identification number that's given to us by the federal government. ESER will continue to be audited as long as it's a large program, and the federal government continues to deem it as high risk. It has been deemed as high risk since 2020, since the first tranche of funds came to entities across the United States. Title I Part A totaled $17 million, and we tested that this year. Remember that the big programs, Title I, Special Education, Child Nutrition, have to be audited every third year, and anything else that's over the Type A threshold, which is typically $3 million, at this point, has to be audited every 30 years. But in the years that we don't audit it, or we give it a break, we'll select other higher-risk, smaller programs. This year, we didn't identify any smaller, high-risk Type B programs. You have received an unmodified opinion for each of these two federal programs and no internal control findings related to each major program. I do want to thank your management team, Mr. David Solis and Mrs. Lindley as well, because they really... Mrs. Lindley Leeper, I called you Mrs. Lindley. Mrs. Leeper as well, just because, you know, they work very hard year-round, and I was talking to Mr. Solis, and he tries very hard, and I said, "You're one of the best clients that we have, and we audit over 50 school districts across the state of Texas." I said, "So don't worry about..." I don't know, he worries a lot, and I appreciate that. He's very conservative, and that makes us feel very comfortable as auditors. So kudos to your management team. Even with transitions in leadership, they still came out shining, so thank you for that. As far as the government-wide financial statements are concerned, these financial statements are very different from what you see in the General Fund, Debt Service Fund, because it represents your financial statements more like a business. It includes all of the long-lived assets, all of your long-term liabilities, and it's on the accrual basis of accounting versus the General Fund is base, it's a modified accrual or very similar to a cash basis. It also represents the net worth of the district, and I don't want us to be alarmed by the $400,000 negative amount at the bottom. I'll be explaining that. The total assets were $1.4 billion, with $1 billion being made up by or composed of capital assets. Your cash and investments were $282 million. And then you have deferred outflows and inflows that are primarily associated with the pension and OPEB liabilities that I'll also discuss. Your total liabilities were $1.8 billion, with bonds making up $1 billion of that $1.8 billion. And then you have these two liabilities, the net pension and OPEB liabilities at $144 and $81 million respectively. The two asterisks on the side of the slide is very important because every year, I have to remind our clients not to worry. This is not a cash liability like your bonds or accounts payable. These two liabilities represent your proportionate share of the state liability, and your proportionate share changes every year. It's your contributions as a Sletta ISD compared to the contributions of all entities that participate in TRS. So with that, what TEA does every year, they always add back the pension and OPEB liabilities to assess and look at the district's financial statements. So although you have a $400,000 negative amount, if you add back these items, you're adding back about $280 million that do not represent a true cash liability. You will continue, and you do continue, to pay into TRS at the statutorily determined rates, so it doesn't mean that you don't pay anything. You are paying towards that, but just on an annual basis and based on the payroll that is subject to the TRS amounts. This also, I'll just briefly go over this. This is what the net pension liability has been doing over the last five years. If you recall, in '22, so just, I'm trying to briefly go through this, but the TRS liability is measured as of August 31, 2022. So we can't wait for TRS to issue its report because this report would be late, so we always have to go one year behind. The reason I give that background is if you recall what investment earnings did in '22, they were dismal. So that really affected the liability at the state level, which then affects your liability as well. That's why you see a jump from $63 million to $144 million as well. In addition, the discount rate went from 7.25% down to 7%, and there's an inverse relationship when you calculate the present value of this liability between that discount rate and that liability, and that, those are the two main factors that have contributed to this increase. On the inverse, you'll see that the net OPEB liability decreased. So here, the rate went, the discount rate increased from 1.9% to 3.91%. So that is why you see the OPEB liability go down drastically. Investment earnings were still dismal, but again, that discount rate makes any large changes does create large swings in that liability. Now, as we move into the General Fund, this is what you're accustomed to seeing on a monthly basis. When we look at the General Fund items compared to the budget, you'll see that revenues were less, $387 million were less than the budgeted amounts by $27 million, primarily, we'll see that here in a bit, that was in state aid. Your actual expenditures of $404 million were less than the final budgeted amounts by $36 million. Other financing uses were $800,000, and those were less than the budgeted amounts by $1 million. The fund balance did decrease by $18 million, but the final amended budget was a decrease to fund balance of $27 million, but it, $28 million, excuse me, and as a result, you only decreased it $17 million. At the end of the fiscal year, your total ending fund balance was $108 million, and after we go through the revenues and expenditures, we'll dive into your fund balance. Here, you'll see that the difference or the gap in the budgeted revenue is both in state and local revenue. So I still looked at last year's revenue amounts for property taxes, which is in your local revenue. Your property taxes did increase only slightly by about $1.5 million. And then in your state aid, it increased from last year, I'm sorry, it decreased from last year because the ADA, average daily attendance, excuse me, went from 34,371 down to 32,698. So as you know, you don't have control over that amount. If the average daily attendance is not there, that is a huge driver for your state funding. When we look at the general revenue components, you'll see that your state aid still makes up 68% or $262 million, and then you have property taxes making up 20% at $78 million. Your other state revenue in the blue piece of the pie has to do with TRS on behalf. There is an offsetting component of TRS on behalf expenditures, and that has to be recognized by the district, recognizing that the state has contributed $22 million in fiscal year 2023 for those employees that participate in TRS. However, it has no impact on fund balance. You also have $21 million for federal funds, and we'll go through that here in a bit. The majority of it is your shared, your School Health and Related Services, or SHARs, that was about $10 million, and the remainder is related to indirect costs that you recouped from the federal funds in the General Fund. As far as General Fund expenditures, budget to actual amounts, you'll see that your Instruction and Related Services were under budget by about $4 million. Your Student Support Services came under budget by $4 million as well. Facilities Maintenance and Operations was right on at $55 million. And then you'll see your General Administration came under at $12 million when you had budgeted $13 million. And you have your other components as well. Function 81 is included in there, which is your facilities acquisition. That was $44 million, and it decreased, it came in at $18 million. So you had facilities acquisition and construction of $35 million. In that $44 million, you only used $11.9 million of that budget. Here, we see the piece of the pie or the different functional expenditures in this pie chart. 60% of your expenditures, or $326 million, is related to Instruction and Related Services. And then you have your Student Support Services at $70 million, or 13%. Your Facilities Maintenance and Operations in the purple piece of the pie at $58 million is 11%. And then I always like to mention the administrative cost. TEA typically uses 8% when they aggregate General Administration and Administration at the campus level to evaluate whether your administrative costs are too high, but you're well below that 8%. And what we see with all of our school districts is they're anywhere between 2% and 3%, so you are not an outlier, and you are consistent with what we see statewide. Now, we get into your General Fund, Assigned and Unassigned Fund Balance. The reason we compare both components of fund balance is because TEA actually aggregates this for first-rating purposes. We then take, so that totaled $103 million, and you'll see a dip from last year, from $112 million to $103 million, but you'll also remember that you had ESER funding included heavily last year. When you compare the fund balance of $103 million compared to the $404 million of expenditures, that equates to 25%, which is 90 days. So your fund balance is 90 days in reserves of your expenditures. TEA recommends anywhere between 60 to 75 days, so you are at 90 days. So you have several components in your Assigned Fund Balance as well for construction that can be repurposed at any time, but right now, you are still well within what is the recommended fund balance. These are the final two slides, the Engagement Letter, and these are just required communications. We were engaged by the district January 6, 2023. When we sent out our Conflict of Interest Related Party Questionnaires, we also sent a letter saying we are onsite, we're conducting fieldwork. If you have any questions between now and at this point, please let us know. We mentioned two risks, management override and revenue recognition. That applies to all audited entities, and so we know that because those two risks are included, we have to design internal controls to mitigate that risk on our end as auditors and also revenue recognition. Every entity, the propensity is to inflate revenue, but we made sure since we have the ability to confirm the majority of your revenue, we're able to gain comfort with that. We also look at your accounting policies to ensure that they're within industry standards, and we didn't see anything that was out of the norm. You did implement GASBY Number 96 Subscription-Based Technology Arrangements, and so you'll see some additional disclosures. Last year, you implemented the LEAST standard. This is the sister standard to that LEAST standard, and it just indicates that if you have a multi-year contract to use a software, you have to record the liability, but you also have this intangible asset on the books. Does not affect your General Fund, only affects the government-wide financial statements. We didn't have any disagreements with management, nor any difficulties in conducting our audit. The last piece of audit evidence that Ms. Leeper and Mr. Solis gave us was the Management Representation Letter, and that indicated that nothing was withheld from us to perform our audit, and all information that we needed was disclosed to us. The second one doesn't mean that you can't have auditor friends. It just means that if we get into disagreement with management and they opinion-shop with another audit firm, we'd be required to tell you, but we are not aware of this happening. And anytime that we're asked any technical questions, our response is not contingent on whether you retain us as your auditors. Finally, as I indicated early on, state aid, the OPEB and pension liabilities are all estimates because, one, state aid is based on several factors, average daily attendance and your property tax collections, values, et cetera. And then the OPEB and pension liabilities are determined by the state. The allowance for doubtful accounts as it relates to property taxes is based on historical collections. That is all that I had for you tonight. Any questions?
Well, first of all, thank you for your presentation. That was a lot of information that came quickly. I just want to, I just want to be, and I thank you for that, but I just want to be sure for the public's benefit, to be clear, we're doing good?
Yes, you're doing good.
Okay. And I also wanted to highlight, my understanding is that we've been well under budget on our expenditures compared to what was budgeted for.
That's correct. That's correct. You were under budget.
Okay. I just wanted those two things to be clear for the benefit of the public, and thank you so much for your presentation tonight.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dwyer? You mentioned maybe five or six slides back, attendance, funding for it. I didn't catch the two numbers you mentioned. Do you remember?
Yes. So, yes, so the average daily attendance in '22 was 34,371. That's based on the near-final Summary of Finances for both '22 and '23. It dropped down to 32,698, which then impacted your state aid. So last year, your state aid figures were 282.5 million, and that created, the decrease in average daily attendance created a decrease in state aid of 261.7 million. So you have two factors, a decrease in enrollment, which was a little over 1,000 students, and then you factor in a percentage of 94, 95, 96% attendance rate that really impacts. And your state aid is based on average daily attendance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions? I do have, just for my own information, what is, I saw, that was one of your first slides. What's this flux and ratio analysis?
So the flux is how did it change from year to year? But the ratio analysis is we'll look at your payroll expenditures compared to total employees. We'll look at payroll expenditures compared to total students. That way, we'll see, does it measure up? If we take those, that ratio analysis, students to payroll, does it make sense? Same thing with revenue, same thing with your non-payroll expenditures. We look at ratios, because sometimes if you just do a year-to-year comparison, it doesn't really tell you much, so we include other inputs like employee, student counts, et cetera.
My other question was, and that's pretty much impacts across the state. It's this recent election that we voted on for the $100,000 homestead exemption. How will that impact the property values? Has the state released those funds now that that has been voted for?
I'm not sure. So are you asking if the $100,000 has been implemented, like locally, on bills? Or are you asking if the state has already offset it and made us whole?
Both, I guess.
So I've seen on the property tax bills, the $100,000 homestead exemption is included on the property tax bills. It was calculated that way locally.
Yeah, I saw that on my own.
On your own. So you know that it's already there in terms of local property tax revenue. We can expect to start receiving in December, January, et cetera. With regard to the state, how they make us whole, I don't know, but they do. I don't know their formula for how they offset that $100,000 change to us, but they did it before. We went, if you recall, we went, I think, from 25 to 40, and then from 40 to 1,000, 100,000. We've never lost money on that. The state has the burden to fund us, and they do.
Yeah, because I voted on, that was voted on, and they're not holding that back for any political reasons.
No, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that that was in an impact. I think that was my only questions. Nope? Well, thank you so much.
Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. De La Torre, thank you for having me. My name is Amy Sanchez. I'm your internal auditor, as you know, and this is my quarterly, almost quarterly, brief for you. As far as administrative update, just really quick, we are fully staffed now. I'm happy to announce our vacant secretary position has been filled by Jessica Magallanes. She is also part of the family. She was a grad from Hanks a few years back. Some quick project updates since our last update. We have one prior year
We have one prior year project pending. That one has been postponed behind a couple of other higher priority regarding our current year audit plan. We've completed six since the last update. 12 are in progress of those. 12, probably about nine will be done before the end of the year, and there's three non-campus that are in progress, and likely two of those will be finished before the end of the year. Here's a list of the annual plan with a list of all the schools and projects that are in progress and complete. And these are all part of your board report that was emailed to you as well. I wanted to take a couple of minutes to inform you, to update you on our follow-up process. So we have revised our process from previous procedures. We've made it a little more concise. Upon the completion of the audit, we will be sending Google Forms to campuses, to departments to inform us of the status of the implementation. Now, what will be different for you all is we will not have an audit report for every follow-up that we do. Instead, we've created a database of the findings of the recommendations, the corrective action plan, basically the status. So periodically, we'll update you on the status of the outstanding recommendations. The first, it is lengthy this time because it includes all of the findings and recommendations from 2022 and 2023, but what we plan for the future is just to give you those that are outstanding. So they'll either be outstanding because it's pending our verification, or that we have gone in and verified, and there's a quick excerpt of what that report looks like. Again, it's long this time around, but that's also because we have a bit of a backlog from 2022 as we were getting fully staffed, as well as developing this more streamlined. As you know, we do have a fraud, abuse, and waste hotline, and we do occasionally receive calls to it. We also receive both anonymous and not anonymous calls and requests. So since our last update, we received one hotline call. That was personnel-related, so that is turned over to human resources. And just a reminder, for any of the hotline, any of the requests that we receive, if we do find that there are findings, that there's exceptions or recommendations, we will issue an audit report. If none of the allegations are substantiated, we don't issue an audit report. This is an update of our budget to actual. What we will be doing between now and the end of the year, we'll need to develop our new annual plan. Some of the projects that we weren't able to get to may roll over, but we also internally, we will look at how many campuses we want to do now that we have a better idea of how long each are taking and reallocate some of those hours to doing non-campus audits. And here's my contact information. You are always welcome to reach out, to stop by. Our doors are always open. Any questions?
You said it was.
That was related to professional service contracts. It was a contract audit. We will issue it before the end of the year. There's nothing high-risk in it, so others have taken a priority over it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Amy, so next year, would you pick the other high schools?
Yes, we hope to review all schools. Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 go ahead.
We hope to review all schools on a two-year.
I like your report, but, but, there are, I did like a report on the corrective action plans that were initiated based on findings when you completed your first audit. How far along are they finished yet? Based on, or, I'm trying to say, how long does it take for these things to be implemented and for you to go back and check up on them?
So, as part of the audit report, the new audit report format, we include the corrective action plan that the campus or director provides us, and they provide us an implementation date. Now, we make sure it's a reasonable implementation date, and depending on that implementation date, we wait a little bit after the implementation date, and that's what our goal is to initiate the follow-up.
Okay, yeah, because I just want to make sure that it doesn't lapse too long.
Yes.
Because of personnel changes and everything else that could impact that in the long run. I said, well, you know, these people are not here anymore because of personal changes. So if we can get those corrective action plans in place as soon as you finish your audit, and then go see if they've been implemented, and we're good to go.
With the issuing of the audit report, the corrective action plan will be in there, but yes, we will follow up soon after the implementation date.
Okay. Well, I mean, I would like a little bit of a summation on where we are on all these active correction plans and which ones have been finished and followed up, and that's it. Okay?
Will do.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Amy. We will now discuss agenda items as listed in the posted notice of the regular meeting of the ISD Board of Trustees for November 15, 2023, and related recommended motions with the superintendent and executive cabinet, and receive responses to questions and/or requests for additional information through the superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on said items at the November 15, 2023 Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. All right. As I go through any of these items, if you have any questions or wish to pull an item, please let me know. Consent item number one is the minutes of the Board of Trustees Workshop and Regular Board Meeting September 13, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. Consent item number two is the Board of Trustees Workshop, October 28, 2023, at 8:00 a.m. Number three is the monthly financials update for August and September 2023. Consent item number four is annual report of cooperative purchasing fees. Consent item number five is annual and financial compliance report for year ending June 30, Consent item number six is 2023-2024 district and campus improvement plans. I only have a question on that. Brad, that you review those?
Good evening, President Ochoa, Dr. De La Torre, members of the board. Yes, my team and I, the state and federal, which is Mr. Paul Covey, and along with us, we review those sips and dips.
For all our campuses.
For all our campuses. In order to use our federal funds, we have to. So this year, we adopted, every year, we kind of tweak the format, as you guys can see, so we can make it easier. As you can tell, it's a lot of work on the administrator's side. But it's essential to know how they're spending their federal funds. So yes, we do review them.
Okay.
And every time they add APO to purchase something, actually goes through finance, they double-check that it's tied to their targets on their sips and dips.
Okay, thank you. And we're going now to action items. Consider an approval of resolution regarding the office of the governor's FY 2024 Criminal Justice Grant Program. Priscilla, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes. Good evening, Board President Ochoa, members of the board, Dr. De La Torre. So this is a grant that through Sheila Elias, we were able to receive, and it's in the amount of $51,000 plus. That's going to cover some of the training fees that are necessarily required to bring in someone and train our peace, I'm sorry, our security officers, and also our two peace officers that we consider our security leadership. And so in addition to the training that's mandated for them, this grant is also going to cover the cost of sending them out to an annual school safety center conference. That's the one that's attended typically by your security leadership and also anyone in charge of emergency management and procedures. And so we're happy to report to you all that we'll be able, with these funds, to send eight members of our district's security leadership.
Thank you, thank you. I think that will really be a benefit to the district.
I think so, too, sir.
To set some of the cost in.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your explanation. Action item number two is consider approval of YSD intergovernmental agreement with the city of El Paso.
Mr. President, I have a question on this one.
Yes, Ms. Woodruff.
So when I was looking at the rationale and the reason why we want to do this, it mentions using one another's recreational facilities. So I was wondering, is there already some sort of list of facilities that we're going to be using, or is it just that they will be allowed to use any and all facilities? I'm just curious because we have some very nice facilities now, and it would be nice to know what, if there were going to be fees, or what would happen when we did that? So I know I'm kind of rambling now. Go ahead.
Good evening, Ms. Woodruff, members of the board, and Dr. De La Torre. Yes, this interlocal has actually been in place now for.
A long time.
You still can't hear me? My mic's not very loud. Is that better? Okay, sorry about that. So this interlocal has actually been in place for well over 10 years. This is a renewal of that, and it primarily serves the district in that we have access to the swimming pools that the city owns, because otherwise we do not. There are other facilities that we will use on occasion, but most recently for Bel Air baseball, we went, I think, to the community college.
Right.
So we have other options available to us. On the flip side, what the city typically uses from us is our facilities for daycare. So the Parks and Rec program uses, does our after-school program at our campuses. And our agreement with them is we won't charge you rent if it's during our regular business hours. You don't charge me rent if it's during your regular business hours. We only charge each other expenses. With regard to any of our facilities or any of theirs, it's always on an evaluative basis. They can't just come in and say, hey, I want access to your football field. It doesn't work that way. And because our fields don't really have a regular business hours use, they have, it's even more difficult to get access to them. So we really don't have, and we have not had that issue since we installed TARP in 2015, 2016. So, does that help?
Yes, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, no other questions. Action item number three, approve amendment to PO number 22202412, master contract number 20210192 with KWA Engineering and Business Science Company Incorporated for Capistrano Elementary School. Action item number four, approve amendment to PO number 22202715, master contract number 20210192 with KWA Engineering and Building Science Company Incorporated for Passadale Elementary School. Go ahead.
Single project where we touch a roof, we have a consultant, and the consultant is KWA. They've been engaged with us for several years now, at least since we started the 2019 bond. For Capistrano and Passadale, you may recall that we increased their scope significantly. So once we identified savings on other projects, we said, we're going to build that big canopy at Passadale. We're going to do the new canopy at Capistrano. And so we did additional roof work that was not originally budgeted, and yet we still wanted these consultants. And so, no, not a new company, not, there is some new roof work involved, but it wasn't all for a completely new roof at each campus.
Sweet, okay. Thank you. Electronic motion on the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration. Ms. Woodruff.
I move to approve the remain, I'm sorry, let me start over. I move to approve the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
Thank you. We have a second by Mr. Chris Hernandez. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are five in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Now we'll go to the consent items as listed, I mean, action items, sorry. Action item number one, consider approval of resolution regarding the office of the governor's FY 2024 Criminal Justice Grant Program. Is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have an electronic motion? Mr. Bustillos.
Mr. President, I move to approve the resolution regarding the office of the governor's FYI 2024 Criminal Judicial Grant Program as presented.
We have a second by Ms. Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. Results are in, five in favor, none opposed. Action item number two, consider approval of YSD intergovernmental agreement with the city of El Paso. Is there any discussion? No further discussion, may I have an electronic motion? Ms. Woodruff.
Mr. President, I move to approve the YSD intergovernmental agreement with the city of El Paso contingent upon final negotiations, in-house council review, and Form 1295 Certificate of Interested Parties.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Bustillos. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. The results are five in favor, none opposed. Action item number three, approve amendment to PO number 22202412, master contract number 20210192 with KWA Engineering and Building Science Company Incorporated for Capistrano Elementary School. Is there any further discussion? If no discussion, may I have an electronic motion? Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, I move to approve amendment to PO number 22202412, master contract number 20210192 with KWA Engineering and Building Science Company Incorporated to increase the fee by the amount of $15,000 in-house council review and Form 1295 Certificate of Interested Parties.
Thank you. We have a second by Mr. Carlos Bustillos. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. The results are five in favor, none opposed. Action item number four, approve amendment to PO number 22202715, master contract number 20210192 with KWA Engineering and Building Science Company Incorporated for Passadale Elementary School. Is there any discussion? No further discussion, may I have an electronic motion? Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, I move to approve amendment to PO number 22202715, master contract number 20210192 with KWA Engineering and Building Science Company to increase the fee by the amount of $26,895 for additional engineering services at Passadale Elementary School contingent.
A second by Ms. Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. The results are five in favor, none opposed. Thank you. We will now move on to a closed session, discussion of district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. The Board of Trustees has determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for this date. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Section 5. Section 551.001, including but not limited to the sections and purposes covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code, 551, 83, 84, 87, and 89. Should any final action, decision, or vote be required with regard to any matter considered in closed session, the final action, decision, or vote shall be in the open meeting or at a subsequent public meeting with notice. The board will now go into closed session in the Rio Grande Room at 7:08 PM. Thank you.
We reconvene this meeting with Chris Hernandez, Charlie Bustillos, Mike Dwyer, Connie Woodruff and myself, Cruz Uchoa at 7:43 PM. Action item number one for closed session was to consider approval of this Woodruff.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the district-wide interior detection audit reports as presented in closed session.
Okay, thank you. We have a second by Mr. Bustillos. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are five in favor, none opposed. All right, that pretty much closes it up. I guess the next one is may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Adjourn.